And welcome to everybody who's joined us remotely. We will obviously move on to introductions now, and I'm councillor Mohamed Marouf, and I'll be chairing today's meeting. And I'd like to welcome James Brackley. You can introduce yourself, and then we'll just go.
Thank you, Chair. I'm James Brackley, independent co-opted member. Nice to meet you all, and thanks for having me.
Hi, I'm councillor Laura McLean. I'm councillor in Watley Ward.
Fran Bellbin, councillor for First Park Ward and deputy chair of the committee.
Afternoon, Lewis Chin Chen, councillor for Stockbridge, Dumbarton Ward.
Councillor Simon Clement Jones, Peter from Grunell.
Councillor Henry Notte, member for Hillsborough.
Thank you so much for the introductions. Apologies for absence, we haven't got any, have we?
I've just received the one from independent co-opted member Alison Howard.
Thank you. Exclusion of the public and press, I don't think there's anything that we need anybody to be excluded from. There is any public and press, so that's fine. Members' declarations of interest, any declarations of interest? No. Moving on to the minutes of the last meeting, and I'll go through page by page. Page 10. Page 11. Page 12. Shout out if there is anything. Page 13. Page 14. Page 15. Page 16. Page 17. That's it, any? Is that true record of the meetings? Thank you. Thank you very much. Public questions and petitions. We have received some questions from Ruth Hubbard, and Ruth has joined us remotely. Welcome, Ruth. So fire away and ask your question.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Ruth, yes.
Thank you. I really appreciate being brought in on Zoom to be able to ask my public question. Thank you very much indeed. I've got two questions, and after I've had my answers, I'll come out of Zoom and I'll watch the rest of the meeting on webcast. So my first question. I've not received an answer to my public question on the 1st of February, as far as I know. And I asked, can I please ask about the role of this committee in relation to Stockbridge Towns deal? Considerable concerns about failing governance arrangements and processes have been raised by local stakeholders, including at the relevant local area committee, but I've not seen them filter through to hear to this committee. And I also asked about the implications of the simplification pilot that I understand Sheffield's part of, and how this is being overseen by members in audit and standard terms. That's what I asked last time. And since then, I understand the discontent around the Stockbridge levelling up fund programme continues with two well-attended town forums raising a host of unanswered questions about the concentration of funding on demolishing and rebuilding the existing library. It appears to those watching this issue that the council has been unwilling to intervene on basic transparency and governance issues, such as publishing agendas and reports or engaging with stakeholders. This is the responsibility of council officers seconded to the Stockport Town deal, yet they seem to be immune from the standards and procedures supposedly reaffirmed by the current administration. So please come the Audit and Standards Committee, provide clear information and an answer in relation to my unanswered question and my updated comments. Thank you. And would you like my second question as well?
Yes.
My second question is this. The transfer of police crime and commissioner powers to the West Midlands mayoral team has been quashed by judicial review due to the inadequacies in the government consultation. That government consultation has been ruled illegal. In South Yorkshire, people were subject to exactly the same consultation. But of course, not many of us can afford to go to judicial review. Regardless of the substantive question involved, would this committee like to express any concern at all about the fact that people in Sheffield and South Yorkshire might have been subject to an illegal consultation upon which a transfer of powers decision has been made? And would this committee make representation to the mayor about the concerns it might have? I note that this judicial review ruling is listed for appeal by the Home Secretary tomorrow in the Court of Appeal. So we don't know what's going to happen. But I've been really concerned about the lack of response or any concerns expressed about the possibility that it looks like we have been subject to an illegal consultation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ruth, for your questions. In terms of the first question, I'll answer part of it. And the second question, I will ask David to pick up. In relation to your first question around the Stockbridge situation, this committee does not have a specific role in this work of the Stockbridge Town Fund Board and partnership. Our role is to look at systems for assurance unless individual matters are brought to us via the assurance mechanisms such as audit or the annual governance statement. DLUHC, which is Department for Levelling Up Housing and Communities, simplification pilot relates to the national levelling up programmes. The three national funds at this time are included in the scheme are the Future High Streets Fund, Town Fund Deals and the Levelling Up Fund Round One, LUF1. Sheffield City Council is an announced national pilot area since 4th of July 2023, along with a number of other simplification scheme pathfinders in nine other local authority areas. More detail of how that will operate will be set out in the published answer to the question. So you will get a written response to your question fully. Sheffield City Council expects all its funding partnerships to work within the accountable frameworks and the national criteria of funding allocations and delivery. The published answer to this question will set out detail from the national guidance on the governance of town funds for information. There are compliance checks completed annually by DLUHC for all the town deals to check whether the town deal board is working in line with the governance and information provision requirements set out in the prospectus and subsequent guidance. The council will bring an annual funding report about Stockbridge Town Hall Fund to the relevant policy committee to provide an update on the towns fund programme, a suggested refresh of governance for municipal year 2024, 25 and beyond, and a programme update at quarter four of 2023 and 24. And also, you will get a fully written response to this as well, Ruth. So thank you for raising the question. David will provide that response to you. In terms of your second question, I'll ask David to comment on that one.
This isn't really a matter that's within the remit of either this committee or this council. We're aware of the case, but it related solely to the West Midlands PCC merger with the West Midlands Combined Authority. They are matters for the Home Office and for the relevant mayoral combined authorities. We don't think it has any impact on the South Yorkshire, as far as we're aware, but they're not really matters that are within our remit.
Thank you, David. Ruth, if you want to come back?
Let me come back. I mean, you know, clearly the judicial review application was taken in West Midlands. That's very, very clear by someone who has the resources to do that. I cannot find any difference in the consultation in West Midlands and South Yorkshire, and that consultation has currently been ruled illegal. I would have hoped, very much hoped, unexpected this committee to express some concern for its voters that we may have been subject to an illegal consultation, exactly the same consultation as in the West Midlands. And I'm very surprised by that answer. It just gives the impression that that the public bodies can act with impunity, that they will not uphold standards and the rule of the law. And I would have hoped and expected at least an expression of concern from this committee about potentially a legal consultation to which voters in South Yorkshire, including Sheffield, have been subject. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. As I say, these aren't matters that are within the remit of the council or this committee. If individuals of the committee wanted to make any comment outside of this forum, then that would be fine. But these are matters for the mayoral combined authority and the Home Office and not for us.
This council approved the transfer, and it does have an interest, and it has an interest in acting on behalf of its citizens.
Thank you, Ruth. I think David has answered as far as we can in this committee. We may have personal views on it, which we can't express in this committee. So I'm just sticking by the boundaries of what this committee's boundaries and definitions are. So I do apologise, but we can't make any further comments on this.
Okay, thank you very much for your answer.
Thank you, Ruth.
Sure you have, Freddie.
Thank you. Moving on to the item seven, which is the Annual Standards Report, which is something that is reported back annually, and I'll ask David to introduce that report, and then we'll take questions from there.
Thank you, Chair. Seeing as the desks down there are monopolised by finance and audit, shall I do it from up here? I hope you've all had a chance to read the report. I won't go through it all in detail, but just to highlight some of the areas. In particular, Chair, there's your forward that I think is probably worth drawing to attention of everybody and the thanks that you have given in there. The report outlines the standards regime, what it applies to, and how it's there in design to protect the Nolan principles, which guide all councillors and are reflected in the council's code of conduct. The way that that is enforced, if there is a written complaint, is through the standards regime and the monitoring officer protocol. And the report itself sets out the results under that. I particularly wanted to thank those that have assisted me with regard to the standards regime over the past year. That's Sarah Bennett and Robert Parkin, who were assistant directors and deputy monitoring officers, who have undertaken some of the work on that. The independent persons, David Waxman and Karen Widowson, who have given me that support, but also support to members who are subject to complaints, they are there to support them as well. And the independent co-opted member for the past year, which was Alison Howard, who has sat on some of the hearings. Also, I don't want to embarrass him too much, since he's here, Jay, who has given support, and Sarah Hyde, who does all the the administration for the standards regime on my behalf. And I really wanted to thank her. So the report sets out a summary of the number of complaints that we've had during the year. As ever, it's always a bit difficult to update on these, given that they are confidential and we can't go into details. But if you see that there are 19 there, and the outcomes are that there's take no action or there's no evidence of breach in six of those. Two were either withdrawn or invalid. Six were rejected because they didn't show any evidence that supported a breach of the standards regime. Three were where there was evidence to support a breach, but they were dealt with by informal resolution. And one, which was referred to consideration subcommittee following an investigation, and another which was referred to a consideration committee without an investigation. This sets out those that have been through the assessment phase, the initial assessment phase. So there are no open matters which are in assessment phase for this period, although some of those that have been referred are still in consideration. So they have not yet concluded, but they are but open in this context refers to those that are still in assessment phase. So those are the numbers that have gone through. I would make a comment that I think the way we try to deal with these is to deal with them and resolve them in a way that is informal and is about training and advice, if that's necessary. And therefore, dealing with them in formal resolution is the preferred way to deal with these, rather than referring them to an investigation or committee. I will do that where I think it is necessary, but I think the way to try and approach this is informal. The take no action or reject tend to be repeat or where there there's probably been a misunderstanding about how the standards regime operates and that the complaints didn't actually refer to matters that were a breach of the code of conduct. The report does set out the circumstances in which each of the options tend to go through. I've already mentioned the current independent persons. I'd also like to welcome two new appointments, Martin and David, who I think are on, David is on the on the call, I don't think Martin is, but I think I'd like to welcome the two new independent persons and also the new, and he's already introduced himself, the new independent co-opted person in James. Can I give particular mention to David Waxman, the other David, who has been an independent person for many years? He has given a lot of support to the monitoring officers across South Yorkshire authorities. I understand, David, that rumours of your retirement may be premature, or is that? Or have you not reconsidered? Have I heard something different? But in any event, I think that whether David is giving us a little bit longer or not, I think that it's hard to express the value and the wisdom that he's been able to give, not only to me, but to my predecessors as well. And I know that they all thought very highly of him. The report then goes on to set out the training and development that has been made available for members throughout the year. I'm very pleased to say that we managed to get some local government association funding in relation to support that, that helped us put together a programme that was there for members. And that report sets out what has been made available. The work of this committee has been to have policy and corporate oversight, so we've looked at the whistleblowing policy, the code of conduct, which was a thorough review that this committee undertook, and that resulted in revised version going to full council for approval. And I'm glad to say it was approved with a particular revision, so I think to the monitoring officer protocol to make it a much more streamlined and hopefully a much quicker process in future. The other areas of work that I undertake is the register of interests and disclosable pecuniary interests for members. And I want to thank members for their support and vigilance in continuing to report to me as they change their interests. The work programme, I'm sure, will always be busy for this committee. There's always a lot to consider. And unless there's any particular questions, I'd like to ask the committee to recommend this report, to know this report and recommend that it goes to full council.
Thank you for that, David. And I'll take the opportunity as well to thank our independent members that work with us, and in particular David Waxman, who I think is, you might. Come in, David.
Just to say, thank you for David's kind comments. I've been doing the role since the passing of the Localism Act. If my memory is correct, we started with, there was a separate standards committee chaired by Pat Mitchley originally, but I've been with several monitoring officers, worked with numerous councillors, and it's been a very positive experience throughout that time. I'd just like to say thank you. And I'd also like to express my thanks to Sarah Hyde and her predecessors in the support that provided from Democratic Services, as it's now called. Again, it's had previous different names. So just to say thank you and to wish the council well. I think my first connection with the council was 40 years ago, at the end of this year. So it's been a long time. I think the time is right to step down from being independent person. But I do wish the Audit and Standards Committee and the entire council well. And just to say that at the end of the item, I will sign off as well and disappear.
Thank you very much, David, and thank you for all the time that you've given. I know it's a very difficult time when you're volunteering for things like this, so it's very much appreciated. And I do remember you from many years ago from education as well. So a long association with the council and also welcoming the new members as well. I think we've got a question from James or comment?
Thank you for the report. In section eight on page 31, training and development, is it something to consider for the forthcoming year? Something on the council's budgeting and accounting processes? Or is that perhaps something that is offered outside of what's listed in this report?
The budgeting setting process, I think members are updated on that as it progresses. If it's about audit, then that probably is, and how the accounts are then compiled them, maybe something we consider that there could be better awareness of.
Thank you, David. Has that answered your question, James? Question from members? Comments? Councillor Bellbin and then councillor Chin Chen.
I'll just mention in response to that question that we have a member development working group that considers things like induction, and we can take that on board in terms of the training that is on offer to members. And we do also access training through SIPF and other organisations to make sure that that is a way available to members as well. Thanks for the report, David, and thanks very much, David Waxman, for your contributions over the years as well. If I can add my thanks to that. I just had a quick question about the complaints, and I think I know I raised this in the pre-meeting, whether we have any open complaints? It seems a little bit contradictory between 5.1 and 5.2, whether it says we have no open complaints, but then in 5.2 it says we do have an open case. And I just wondered how those numbers compared to previous years as well?
The open in the table is referring to open still in the assessment phase. And so I think that is the words in the brackets there. So there are ones that have been through that phase and are in, so referred to consideration subcommittee with an investigation is still an active one. And so that's why there are the matters still open, which does appear to be contradiction. But I think when you realise that it's open in assessment phase, that does explain the difference. I think it's been slightly higher, but not particularly higher than previous years. I think the, I would say that I don't think there's been a difference in what I'm seeing and issues that have arisen. But I think the numbers have been slightly higher.
Thank you, Lewis.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the report. Just in relation to 8.10 about licensing committee training, I'm conscious that there are several different things that licensing committee members need to be trained on listed in the report. Some of those training sessions don't happen until a considerable way into the year. What's the council's position on that? Do members need to undertake that training before they hear those types of cases?
It's not mandatory, but it is preferable. And actually, if members haven't been trained, there's always a legal adviser there anyway to help members through any decisions that they're making until they've had the training. But it's not mandatory. But I think I take your comment on board about how quickly that can be arranged. And I'll take that back with the licensing team and my colleagues to make sure that we get that in as early as we can.
Any questions? Councillor Notte.
Thank you, Chair. Just quickly touching on something that crosscuts between the standards report and the next item on the agenda. You mentioned training relating to members' disclosure of interests. Has that been updated to avoid the issue that was rated as red by Ernst &amp; Young in relation to related parties, which is on page 42 of the Members' Pack?
Yeah, I think related parties is slightly different to interests. So I have updated the members' training. It's probably worth putting something in there about related parties. It's slightly different to disclosable interests, but it's probably something that's worth reminding members about. And that's probably a good opportunity to include it in that training. Yeah, thank you, councillor Notte.
Thank you. Any further questions before I comment? No? I've just picking up on what councillor Chin Chen said earlier about licensing in particular. I think that is a concern that quite a few members have raised in the past as well. Because if you're a substitute member, you could be asked to attend a licensing committee without having any knowledge of what you should or shouldn't be saying in those forums. So I think it's something that we can send out from this committee to say, look, it needs to either happen very quickly, or I know there's a legal representative there, but you can't stop a hearing and say, look, I don't quite understand this. Can I just have a quick conversation? There should be a seamless way of dealing with this. So I think there is something there to pick up on. I know it's going to be a burden on members in particular to go through that training. But I think it's actually worth it because there's a legal process around licensing. And if it does get challenged anywhere, then we could be sort of weak in the sense that some of the members that were asking the questions didn't actually know what their legal remit was. I'm just trying to find the right words here. So I think it's something that, David, if we can pick up and send a message out from this committee, if we can, that is something that we really need to pick up quite quickly.
No, I appreciate that. And I think it's probably a good message from this committee to send out to members as well, that when it's arranged, and I know members have busy diaries and a lot of conflict and interest, but to try and prioritise the training when it is provided. We can always do repeat or record it and send it out. But I think if members can prioritise it as well, I think that I think that would be a helpful message from this committee to send out, particularly as we say in those quasi judicial arena-like licensing committee.
No, thank you for that. I think it's terribly important. And one thing that we might, the suggestion that you've just made there, that people can actually listen to a pre-recording, that sometimes helps with members because they can do it in their own time, rather than actually being specifically asked to come at a certain time and listen to it in that sense. So I think a recorded session might be a helpful one. I'm just talking selfishly here, which is that a recorded one I find quite easy to dip in and out of. Whereas if it's an absolute session, sometimes you find it difficult to get to, and members' diaries being as they are. A lot of the members, you've got to remember, do actually have a full-time job as well. So they're juggling the two things together. And equally, that applies to member training in general. We have had lots of anecdotal comments from various people and members included, that sometimes that can be missed, or part of it can be missed, which means that when you're discharging your duties, sometimes you're not as aware of what you should and shouldn't be doing in terms of legals. So the message again from this committee is that both of those areas really need to be reinforced with the parties, that this is what we expect members to do. So if we can record them, that's even better. Councillor Bellbin?
Again, Chair, I think we're taking on board a lot of those kinds of issues through the Member Development Working Group and looking at lots of different ways to deliver training that is more accessible to members. We've talked about podcasts, for example, that you can listen to in your car on the way in or whatever. And so you don't even have to be sat looking at a screen. So they're all things that we're looking at. We're also planning to send out a survey to all members soon about what kind of training will be easiest for them to access. So we'll be able to use that information to inform both. So we'll be able to use that information to inform both the subject matter for training, but also the best delivery method. So there's lots of options there.
No, thank you for that. Unless there's any further questions, then we'll just, this committee comments on, we've got the comments, approves the report for submission to full councillors. Unless there's any objections, we agreed on that. Thank you very much. Thank you, David, for presenting that. Moving on to item eight, which is the formal response to audit recommendations. The presenting officer is Ruth on this one. Ruth?
Thank you, Chair. So we're here today to provide members with an update on progress to EY's prior year recommendations following the audit of the twenty-one, twenty-two statement of accounts. EY first presented their audit results report to the committee in March twenty last year, which was then amended and reissued to the committee in September last year. Therefore, it should be acknowledged that although the timing of the results was very tight, officers did action audit adjustments where material in the twenty-one, twenty-two accounts or took action in twenty-two, twenty-three, with the majority of improvements and implementation falling into the current financial year for twenty-three, twenty-four. Within EY's audit results report, there were nineteen open observation, sixteen of which related to the twenty-one, twenty-two accounts and three that remained open from twenty, twenty-one accounts. Appendix one of your report, which is on page thirty-nine, we have listed all nineteen observations and included management's updated response on progress made. EY have rated them all into low, moderate or high, which again is described in your information pack on page thirty-nine. The online report has been colour-coded and appreciates some of you might have black and white printer copies tonight. So just to summarise our ratings, in twenty-twenty-one, EY raised one moderate and two low recommendations and in twenty-one, twenty-two, EY raised two high, eight moderate and six low recommendations. I wasn't proposing to go through all nineteen observations tonight, but I'll just go through the two high ones. So the first of the high ones were property plan and equipment valuation inputs. And just for a bit of background, the PP assets on the balance sheet stands at three point four billion pounds and covers approximately four thousand assets. So in asset valuation terms, they are estimates and they are based on the judgment of our internal valuers and valuation judgements can be different between different parties. However, our surveyors agreed with EY's observations and on the inputs and we amended the twenty-one, twenty-two accounts for those audit adjustments and they were actioned. Property services have since made changes to their quality assurance checks and enhanced those, along with finance also, doing census checks and challenging their inputs where necessary. The second of the high ratings were related parties. So EY highlighted that members should ensure their declarations of interest are kept up to date and where declarations are made, that as an accounting team, we disclose those if required. Again, EY raised the issue and we actioned those at the time, so the adjustments were made in the twenty-one, twenty-two accounts. So overall, we're asking committee tonight to note management's responses to each of those nineteen observations and just note our progress on implementing. Does anybody have any further questions?
Thank you for that, Ruth, and I'll open it up to questions. Any members? Councillor Notte, councillor Clement Jones next.
Thanks for that, Ruth. A lot of technical information in this, so apologies if as a layperson I got completely the wrong end of the stick on something, but I was wondering if I could ask you a question about the IFRS sixteen preparedness. So it says in the observations from EY that we'll be implementing this for twenty-four, twenty-five accounts. And in the update, that the new asset register is going to be implemented in September twenty-four. Is the asset register going to retrospectively look at the leasing costs as an operational expense? Or are we going to manually adjust it from the start of twenty-four, twenty-five so that we're IFRS sixteen compliant for the financial year? Does that make sense?
Yes, that's right. So IFRS sixteen was delayed initially, so it's going to be valid from the first of April this year, so will be part of the twenty-four, twenty-five accounts. We're currently, our asset register is currently with Technology Forge, which has migrated to Civic, so it is the same company. And their software package does include an IFRS sixteen compliant leasing module within that. We currently hold leasing information within the asset register, so it's just a matter of migrating that across and updating it to meet the current IFRS sixteen requirements.
Right, councillor Clement Jones?
Yeah, thank you. I suppose it's not, my questions aren't really on this as such, but obviously there's been problems with audit and the timing of it. So it's really, you know, is this the new normal? Are we, you know, are the changes that we're making or that have been made to the scheme works in terms of external audits and the better resourcing going to help us hit our deadlines and get these things signed off in a more timely fashion?
I think you're right. I think that's been difficult, hasn't it? Because quite often with the audit delays, we're into the next year end before we've got the results of the previous audit, so that it's very difficult to then start trying to then implement those for that current year. So your implementation gets knocked back. But then these recommendations are always very welcome because it gives us good assurance on our accounts. They've gone through everything. And, you know, we get a few weeks to do the, to prepare the accounts and they get months and months and sometimes years to do the audit. So it gives us some good assurance and all these recommendations give us, provide us with, you know, good evidence of where we can improve and that's always really welcome because it's so big that it's hard to see it sometimes. So this is really welcome and they find anything.
Thank you. Any further questions, James?
Thank you, Chair, and thanks for the instruction. I just wanted to ask a few questions just in terms of framing kind of where we're up to and how far behind we are. It seems to me we're sort of twelve to eighteen months behind where we'd really like to be in an ideal situation. But equally, we probably are where many other councils are, particularly in relation to the issue of assets, which is also the IFRS thirteen stuff has delayed lots of councils. And it seems to me potentially does IFRS sixteen have the potential to also delay future sets of accounts would be one question. And in terms of just framing it, I guess, we've had a handover, I understand, from EY to KPMG and the potential control deficiencies, particularly with the stuff that's coming up over assets, that's obviously coming out of the samples that they're testing substantively. That obviously could be more widespread and could relate to other valuations that just EY didn't happen to pick up on in their sample, but KPMG may do. In terms of getting us sort of back on track to where we'd like to be in turning these audits around, what's your view of where we are with regards to the controls around the asset register? And particularly the evaluation process in, my question's really more towards twenty-two, twenty-three, with the hope that twenty-one, twenty-two really is signed off in fairly short order. If we shift our view to twenty-two, twenty-three, what's your feeling as regards to where we are?
So I'll just cover the IFRS sixteen. So in, even though it's been delayed, we have over a number of years been on all the SIPF courses, we've got the IFRS sixteen guidance notes, there is a specific guidance pack on that. We've already been doing all the preparation work, so we've had communications out, we've liaised with schools, we've liaised with contracts team and procurement teams to identify all the contracts that are in place that have the right abuse assets in there. So we've already been doing all the preparation stages at this point and gathering all that leasing information together. So we felt, we feel fairly comfortable in terms of preparation, just hitting that go button on the first of April and getting that into the system and the system being able to generate all the information from there. So it shouldn't cause, we hope it won't cause any problems and we continuously update, whether it's EY or KPMG, in terms of our preparation, preparedness state on that one. And then just, shall I just answer on the asset valuation process? I mean, as Ruth said, it's a three billion pound asset base and there's over forty-six thousand assets. For this particular year, there were over three thousand individual valuations by the asset team, by the property team, and they can't conduct those valuations until thirty-first of March because they have to wait for the latest indices to be available. So it's quite a tight timescale. There's a lot of preparation, obviously, that goes into that beforehand as much as they possibly can do. And there will always be, you know, with that tight turnaround for year end, there'll always be things that they've not done perfectly. Some of the things that are classed as errors are sometimes just a difference in judgment between our asset valuers and EY's asset valuers. And that's always going to be the case, different values, different judgements. And we quite often concede because, you know, both ways can be right and so we're happy to change that. And we are quite compliant in that respect, in terms of changing things. In terms of what they've been doing to prepare for that, to look at how they can improve their processes, they've looked at categorisations better and grouping assets by common characteristics so that then will reduce subjectivity between our own individual valuers as well. And they've had conversations with EY about how that looks in terms of what they think their valuers' expectations are. That could all change, of course, because we're about to transition to a new audit firm and they may have completely different experts with different judgements and so, you know, it could change all over again and change our approach to that kind of thing.
Thank you for that. Any further questions from members?
Just to add, on the backlog issues and getting back on track, I think it's worth stating that the government have been working on this for a while now. They issued a statement in February, we set out the plan of action for them, so the Department for Leveling and Housing Communities, they've been working with the Financial Reporting Council, the FRC, as well as the National Audit Office, SIPF, the ICAEW and Public Sector Audit Appointments, to try and find a way through the backlog of audits. The proposal that's been set out is in three phases. The first phase is a reset, so they propose a backstop date of the thirtieth of September twenty-four, by which all historic audit opinions should be completed and issued. The second phase then will be recovery, which means that the backstop dates for subsequent years are sort of phased to try and get things back onto an even keel. And then phase three is reform to look at more systemic challenges that need to be addressed in the longer term. So the impact of the reset is the most depressing. Obviously, the thirtieth of September isn't too far away. Our ambition and EY's ambition is to sign off the twenty-one, twenty-two accounts very shortly, look at what they can progress on the twenty-two, twenty-three accounts in order to then be able to hand over the work to KPMG for them to take on the twenty-three, twenty-four audit.
Thank you, Philip. Again, any further questions from members?
Do you think a different audit partner might have a different approach to the suitability of cash basis? It's what we use at work and I appreciate it's got this wonderful advantage in that you have a real concrete point in time, which is when the money went in or went out. And would it cause loads of complications if we followed the observation from EY that we moved over to accruals?
So the accounts are based on SIPF's accounting guidance and we do do the accruals basis. You might be referring to one of the recommendations where it said EY has recommended that some of our sampling looked like it was based on actual costs within twelve months. I don't know if that's the one you're referring to. That one is where we include twelve actual payments, usually utility costs, because we think that's the best basis to show in that financial year. So we tend to use March to February rather than April to March. We're kind of, so we do do it on accruals basis. We think that's the best, rather than estimating that final month of utility costs, for example, and comparing estimates and actuals and then amending if materially different. We think we are pretty consistent and there isn't much difference. So we do do it on a cash, on an accruals basis. I think that one recommendation is just where we think the actuals is better than an estimated final cost. It's just, it's the cost benefit really, because if you think of every utility bill for every property, you know, that we have and then, you know, those bills come in at different stages and then, you know, could be mid-month to mid-month, the work involved in us actually trying to then do the perfect cutoff. In a perfect world, we would do that, but instead we just ensure that we include twelve bills for that year, rather than, you know, work out for every single bill what the cutoff was for the first of April, thirty-first of March.
It sounded like following the recommendation would be quite onerous on us for presumably fairly little tangible benefit.
Thank you. Just a few comments from me, just following up from what James has just said about valuations in particular. It does concern me, to be fair, that it takes the external auditors to pick out some of these issues which are fairly fundamental for a surveyor to be able to understand in the first place. So I'm not saying this in any negativity here, but when we're looking at the number of assets that we're actually valuing, some of the things that they've been picking up on, and I accept the fact that there is rectification taking place on these things. But the one that I'd like to start with, and then I'll come into a few more of them, so this is just comments and observations, I'm not wanting an answer here, is particularly around leases and where ground rents, in one particular case, which is probably the one that the external auditor has picked upon, but when you've got hundreds of these to do, how many more are we actually missing in terms of not collecting the ground rents on? So would there be any internal checks to make sure that that wasn't actually happening? And I know the answer was going to be that we're putting new systems in place, but I've seen this happen consistently since I've been on audit and we keep having the same sort of response. So that's one of my observations. The other observations that I've got purely from a valuation perspective, again, because it does have a huge impact on if we're undervaluing something or we're overvaluing something in what the settlement with central government is. And I can speak from some experience in this where that has happened in a case where the default was probably a million or two million pounds, which is quite a significant amount. So the observations that I've got is the yields that they've been using for car parks and other areas, again, it's something that people, any competent surveyor should be aware of, let's put it that way. And then you go on and the spreadsheet formula being incorrect. So if the spreadsheet formula that they're actually working on is incorrect, albeit I accept that this might have moved on from there. But that is quite fundamental, which means that when you're inputting into this formula, there might be other mistakes that are actually occurring as well, because the formula is wrong in the first place. So that's the foundation of the formula being wrong could have a knock-on effect on other parts of the valuation as well. And some of the valuations that they talk about, which I'm just picking out the ones that they've picked out, not ones that I'm particularly looking at myself. Valuations around, so the valuations around nursery schools, et cetera, done in the wrong way completely. And the other thing is incorrect BCSI rates being used. I mean, that's quite fundamental as well. So what I'm saying is these are, and the other one was incorrect size areas being used to value something, which again is quite a fundamental thing. Accepting the fact that these things are being rectified, can we reinforce that to say that there should be extra emphasis put on this? Because I do know what property departments do. Asset valuations are taken when right at the end of their business, basically, at the end of the financial year. And a lot of these, dare I say, may well be done on a desktop basis, which does cause abnormalities in terms of the values that you would actually achieve. So I do apologise for being so deep on this, but it's something that I care about very dearly, valuations. dearly, valuations. But before we move on from this, I think David wants to come in with the addendum on item eight as well.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So this comes on the back of what's already been mentioned, which is the issues with regard to audits and the fact that as Philip has mentioned, that EY are now wanting to sign off the 2122 accounts. That's good, but it has given us a little bit of a rush in relation to the annual governance statement. So this is the annual governance statement from 2122, which was approved in September 2022, so it's not the one that this committee approved recently. The CIPFA guidance is that the annual governance statement must be current at the time it's published. Now, I think we thought it was going to be concurrent with the accounts when it was approved back in September 2022, but it's not at the moment. Helpfully, we're not the only people in that position and CIPFA have issued further guidance, which says that the way to deal with that is to undertake a review to see whether there are things that are known now that would be relevant to that year only and not subsequent years, that had we known them at the time, we would have included them in the annual governance statement. So we've undertaken that review and the revised statement, there was only one matter that we felt was a significant matter as defined by CIPFA that needed including, and that's in relation to HR policies. So although there were some issues around HR already within the annual governance statement, I think what we've realised subsequently is that there is a wider issue with regard to the policies not being up to date that probably gives us a greater governance assurance issue that wasn't reflected in the original report and therefore the report's been updated to properly reflect how we feel that those assurance matters are. There is work ongoing in relation to that, the specific work in place to update all those policies and therefore action is in hand with that. So that is the one update to that report. It also includes the reference to the fact that we do now feel that it's up to date, which again, the CIPFA guidance recommends we do, and I've changed the signatories to reflect current section 151 and the current leader of the council. I did wonder whether the current leader would want to sign that, but having looked back, he was actually on this committee when it approved the original back in September 2022, so I think he shouldn't have any problems with that. I think councillor Clement Jones was the only person who was as well on the committee at that point. It was the day before I took over this role, so even I wasn't here.
Thank you, David. Any comments, questions on that? James?
Sorry, just a quick question. Do we know why that recommendation in relation to human resources policies that's going into the governance statement isn't, or doesn't appear to be in the ISA 260 update from the auditors? So where's that? The issue that you've identified that needs to be put in the governance statements? Could you say where that's coming from? Is that coming from the auditors?
No, that's not from the auditors, that's from an internal council review.
Thank you. All it remains for me to do is, on item eight, the recommendation is the Audit Standards Committee is asked to note management's response on progress made to consider and implement Ernst Young's prior year recommendations. And on the addendum, its recommendation is that the Audit and Standards Committee approve the revised annual governance statement as set out in appendix one. Are we all agreed on that? Thank you.
Thank you very much for the office as to taking all these questions and being here today to comment on these things. Thank you. Work programme, Jay?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I think you can find the work programme from page 55 in your packs. It's there for members to approve and to identify any other items they wish to include on the programme. We have just got the one meeting left after today, which is the 25th of April. Probably mindful that that meeting does fall within the pre-election period, so we have to be mindful of that. But then looking at that meeting as well, the 25th of April meeting, we have got a lot of items scheduled for there, so I'd probably just pass back to Chair and to ask members to come in and review that meeting if they feel that that feels okay or if officers need to go away and look at rearranging some of them items to the next one or two years of work programme. Thanks, Chair.
Before any other members come in, I know councillor Nottingham has indicated that he wants to come in, I would just like to make a comment on this, which is, it is actually fairly heavy for 25th of April, especially with all sorts of things happening in May. So I think we'd really need to streamline that and I will look to members to comment on which ones we can actually take off and which ones we really need to discuss on the day.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I mean, coming as it does as the 25th of April shortly before we all play musical chairs again, there's likely to be quite some considerable churn. If we could split off the most important forward-looking things in terms of planning to sit with the next year's committee and look and prioritise things that are reporting back on what we've done over the previous year as to sit in the 25th of April, I think that would be a good methodology to start with.
Totally concur with you on that. David?
Yes, also, Statement of Accounts 2223 audited and Report of Those Charged with Governance is not likely to be ready for those, so I think that will reduce the load slightly.
One down, we need to bring a few more down, I think, on this one. Sorry?
The next one, the ISA 260.
This one? That one? That can go as well, Clement? That's good. So we've got one, two, three, four, still got five items on there and just bearing in mind what councillor Nottingham said, some of this stuff may well be for the next committee to discuss to be released. The Internal Audit Plan, does that need to be at the next one, Lynda?
Yeah, the Compliance to International Auditing Standards, it's just, it's a summary of all the reports and everything you've had during the whole year. So I think from what councillor Nottingham just said, that's probably useful for this committee because it does summarise everything that you've gone through in the last 12 months.
So we'll keep those two.
Yeah.
And then there's this Community Schools Update and Complaints, Performance and Complaints Improvement Plan. Unless anybody's really keen on bringing those two at the next committee, I'm minded to move them on to the next one. Councillor Clement Jones?
I mean, in terms of the Complaints, Performance and Complaints Service, it tends to be one of those that we do have quite an in-depth discussion about, so I wouldn't want to cut it short.
I totally agree with you. So I think the two that I'm, and the other one is the Introduction to the Audit Plan, does that need to be at the next one as well?
Yeah, so the Audit Plan is the plan of Frintan Audit for the next 12 months. So like I say, it's whether or not you want that for this committee, because obviously it's forward-looking, it's the audits for the whole year, or whether you want to defer that to June. It's, I mean, we'll still continue, we're not going to stall the audits, we're still going to continue with the audits.
One needs to stay on, Chair.
Right, let's leave the KPMG one on, which is the, and but the...
The top one, the Internal Audit Plan 2425.
Yeah.
I think, I think Lynda is saying that one can go to June because that's a forward look.
So that one goes to June, the Internal Audit Plan goes to June, the Compliance to International Auditing Standards and ICO recommendations, they stay on. Introduction and Audit Plan stays on, the KPMG one. I agree with what Simon said, the Complaints one, I think we'd normally have quite a big debate on that one. So that one probably is sensible to move to June. And the Community Schools Update, I think we'll move to June as well.
I think that streamlined it a little bit, hasn't it? So if all members are happy with that, then we'll go along with that as a timetable thread. Yep? Thank you so much. Programme done and the date and time of the next meeting is the 25th of April 2024. And that concludes the meeting for today. Thank you so much.